Mr. Flacco, need to roll.
Lori Krasinski.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Linda Grassi, absent.
Jennifer Harden.
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the United States of America, the visual, the liberty, and the justice of our citizens.
I want to welcome everybody on behalf of the board. I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public meeting, public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. We have a motion to adjourn to executive session at 7:01 PM for matters of personnel. Can I get a second?
Second.
For appointment and/or appointment, discipline, investigation, or charges and/or complaints. In second, Mr. Heck.
Present.
Mr. Flacco, can you hold the roll?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Krasinski.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
We're going to move real quick over there. We won't make everybody else sleep, so we'll be back in a minute. All right. So we have a motion to approve minutes for April 28, 2022, May 4, 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can you hold the roll, please?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Krasinski.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to any discussion of old business.
I think this goes on old business, and I apologize, I know we're going to talk about through the process about it ahead of time, and I did not. In light of what we saw again with another school shooting in Texas, I would request that the Buildings and Grounds Committee bring back, I know we talked about adding some kind of security measures to Buckeye and Melridge and some of our buildings, and I think that it'd be, the bond issue not passing, that we do need to take a look at those buildings and see what kind of additional security we might be able to add. So I'd ask the Buildings and Grounds to bring that back up into your next discussion. Do it, please.
Yes, no, it makes total sense, and we can do that.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Prisenski, at some point, and I'm looking for you to figure out where best to put in the agenda, I would like to talk about the board being together a couple of times to go and look at the buildings, take tours in the buildings, so we all have the same baseline of understanding. Have you with that in new business or during the Buildings and Grounds?
Let's just, let's move it over to new business. That's kind of where we targeted it, and we'll make that date, and then, but is there any other old business before we move on?
I have a point of old business.
Okay.
At the last board meeting on April 28, 2022, I was accused by a speaker at the meeting of pushing my way into a house uninvited, demanding that people vote no on the school bond levy, and that I would not leave a house when requested to do so. Those accusations are false and defamatory. I am making this statement tonight to set the record straight about those false statements. It is impossible for me to personally reach out to all of the people who were present at that meeting or were later told about those false statements. As a result, this meeting and this public forum is my chance to tell everyone that those statements were false, slanderous, and defamatory. I categorically state that I did not push my way into any house uninvited, I did not demand people vote no on the school bond levy, and I never refused any request to leave a house. As you know, I was strongly against the 37-year bond levy because it was bad business for our schools, and it was especially bad business for our residents and voters. The overwhelming defeat of the bond levy strongly supports my position on this issue. It is time for us to move forward and to come up with cost-effective solutions for our schools. I am ready to work with any and all people to discuss reasonable ideas and proposals to move our schools forward. This statement is a small step that I am taking to try and protect myself and my family from the slanderous and defamatory statements that were made against me. Those types of personal attacks against any school board member and/or elected official harm the official and his or her family, and may ultimately undermine the government institutions of this great country. President Krasinski, I'd like you to put this into the minutes and put it into the record, please.
Thank you. Any other old business? All right, new business.
Okay. So, as I alluded to just a moment before, you know, we need to establish a baseline of understanding of all the buildings, and I think that would include the two new elementaries as well, so we understand, you know, an equal baseline. Scott has been around, but he has not seen, I don't know, all the buildings, and so I think that would be a wise thing. I know, Mr. Flacco, you have some dates where Mrs. Grassi's not available, and I would recommend probably a two-day process, one maybe focused on elementary, and then another day focused on Lamueth and the campus. So, I guess the first question is, and Mr. Arlesic, we would certainly need you to be involved with this, and so does my recommend the thought of doing the elementaries and then Lamueth and the campus in separate days? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
And do you think that's something that we need to do on a weekend, or can it be done in the evening? What would be your thoughts?
I mean, I'm open to fall. Weekend would give us more time. Evening, it could, you know, depending on how much detail we want to get into in each school, it could be lengthy, so a weekend would probably be more beneficial. I'll leave that up to the group.
I know, I'm usually the one who has trouble with daytime because of my job, but if I have enough advance notice, I can ask for time off, too. That's better for everybody also, so I just can't, it's hard to do immediate.
Right, right, yeah, to spur the moment. So my guess, and obviously I'm talking after school, it wouldn't be during the school day, and actually the school day is going to, we're going to stop having school days here in just a few days. So my, how about this, do you have those dates handy that Mrs. Grassi's not available?
The things that she gave me that she couldn't do were June 1st, June 17th, June 23rd, and July 6th.
Okay.
She said she couldn't, we tried any emails.
Okay, so that's a Wednesday, 17th is a Friday, the 23rd is a Thursday, and July 6th is a Wednesday. Okay, so my, all right, so this weekend would not be available to us just because we may be having graduation on Saturday. So, my personal preference, for what it's worth, would be to do it on a weekend because of the time flexibility. Is everybody comfortable with trying to aim down that path?
I'm open to that. Weekends would just be mornings, just with having a Sunday system here, we have a lot of grad parties coming up.
So, like 6 o'clock PM, 6 PM?
I want to be, I want to be in buildings by 8:00 AM.
We have two weekends of camping trips planned, too, in June, just so, yeah.
Okay.
And that would be difficult for me.
Okay, gotcha.
So, the weekend of June 17th, June 17th, 18th, and 19th, I think it's Father's Day, though, so.
Okay, so I've got a conflict, although if we targeted, this is probably going to be, you know, what do you think, an hour in each school, Mr. Arlesic?
At least.
At least.
Okay, so we've got, so, all right, so I, you know, I guess I could be flexible on the 18th, if we get in, it'd be preferable to do it, you know, first thing in the morning, whenever Mrs. Harden would be.
I've got two graduation parties that day.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think we could spend probably like a half hour at this table doing this. It would be best to, like, throw out a doodle hole of the dates and try to get.
You know, that makes a heck of a difference.
You know, I just feel like we've really just, we've done, we've gone down this rabbit hole a whole bunch of times.
Nobody wants to hear us, you can flip our schedule.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I can put it together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll put it together. Do we want to look at mostly weekends and during the week as well?
It'd be easier if it's two different dates.
Right, and that's what we were.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I'll put that together and send an email to everybody.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome. That was our administration, yes, yes.
Who was calling?
That was maybe my question, that was the next question, right. Who are we inviting with, administration? Mr. Arlesic, you can be on that, obviously.
The only time I'm not available would be July 26, 27, 28, it's my daughter getting married and coming up.
Congratulations.
Other than that, I'm available.
Okay.
Except for father's.
Gary, can you please send me the dates of Buildings and Grounds, we just automatically exclude those. And can you just email me those dates, so that way I just don't even?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
And did you change them to who from the administration?
No, I remember. Who from the administration, other than Rich? Do we, I mean.
I think it's Rich.
All right. You're the chosen one.
Is that good?
Yep, no, it's perfect. We need to figure it out, and with so many people, we've got to.
Yeah, it's going to be tough.
We can flip a lot of things.
Right. Another piece of new business, I had sent an email about creating a school board handbook. You know, we've had a lot of discussions at this table about expectations, responsibilities of the board, and there is a service by the OSBA where they'll help us put that together that connects to fire advice code and school policy, everything, so they pull it all together nicely for us, and it's documented. I personally think it'd be a great thing to have for future board members or just for us to reflect on when we need to kind of look back at some of the agreements that we've made, so I just want to throw that out.
I think it's a great idea.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, so I'll get more information on it, and then at the next, in June's meeting, I think we need to put it on and probably ask for two board members to kind of be the subcommittee to work on that, to bring it back to the rest of the board, so.
Do you want, would you like, can I do this, just kind of roll it into policy-type things?
I was thinking the same thing. I was.
Look at us on the same page.
Yeah.
Great.
I love that.
There you go.
And I just know we need to put it on because we also will have to see what the OSBA needs as far as how they are charged with the services and so forth, so, yes. All right, any other new business?
I have something that goes along with moving forward on renovating and upgrading the buildings, and a little bit about a school board member. The job of a school board member is vast. We are responsible for a 40-plus million-dollar budget and all that comes with it. Part of that is being aware of what is going on in the buildings, both the people and the buildings themselves. Part of what I have done and continue to do is going through Riverside and John R. Buildings, taking an inventory of each room, counting the light fixtures, light bulbs, outlets, ceiling tiles, smart boards, whiteboards, chalkboards, desks, chairs, and other things. And just to be clear, a board member does not need a permission slip to go into the buildings. When a board member goes into the buildings, there is no danger of safety, security, risk, or liability. This is a mountain of work. If a board member wants to do it, and I have the desire to do it, the result will be that we will have the knowledge and information of what we need to do, so when we hire a company to do an assessment and formulate a bid package for our project, we will be able to make sure every dollar is spent effectively, efficiently, and productively. Any of the board members that desires to help count light fixtures, light bulbs, ceiling tiles, outlets, et cetera, et cetera, is welcome to join in work.
Any other new business? All right, so that brings us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First one is the Business Advisory Council. We did have a Business Advisory Council meeting on May 16th. We discussed graduation requirements, coursework, embedded industry-recognized credentials, and discussed how the BAC or the Business Advisory Council can get involved through pre-apprenticeship partnerships. So, it was a really good meeting. Dr. Malathur and Dr. Bassett presented a lot of information to the people that are on the Business Advisory Council, and they provided a lot of suggestions also, and gave a lot of good input. So, I think it's a really good partnership, and I'm really excited about some of the things that are coming up, and I know you highlighted some of those, I don't know if you want to add anything, just kind of highlight what you talked about.
Well, we did, we kind of went over what we had talked about here, about graduation requirements, just getting people to start to understand that graduating from high school doesn't just mean getting a diploma anymore, and how many more parts there are to that. What I thought was really cool about that meeting was how eager those people were, and we actually had two phone calls that day from, and well, we only had four or five people in the meeting that morning, I think, but two of them called Dr. Bassett or myself and said, hey, this is what I can bring to the table, call me when you guys are ready for this. So it was super cool. They're very good people on that committee.
Yeah, I love the input, too. They gave you guys good suggestions about ways to possibly think about the curriculum or different ways to approach it, too, so. Any questions? All right. That'll take us to Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association. Mr. Fischel?
I was unable to attend the Alumni Association meeting. For curriculum, we have a meeting set in June. I did meet with Cheryl Lanning, and we spoke, I was interested in learning more about what she does and what her job entails, and I appreciate it spending that time, and we're going to spend some more time because there's so much. So anyway, she's involved in student services, special ed, the IDA, the English Language and Learners, speech, occupational, physical therapy, the therapist, she works with the therapist, she works with the school psychologist, as I understand it, we have five in the district, health aides and school nurses, counseling and mental health, she's the homeless liaison for the district, along with, I understand, Chuck, and transportation with Chris and Donna. So kindergarten registration and enrollment and screening, kindergarten readiness assessment, hearing and speech testing, preschool, she has some help, but she works in there, she's the 504 Compliance Officer, early entrance, she handles that, and gifted, it's called 127 IQ, the math academic, WEPs and WAPs, which I still don't know what it is, but I learned that. And the WAPs is more of an accommodation for the enrichment plan, and the WAPs, I understand, is the acceleration plan, and she does the most with conflict resolution and putting out fires, and she works with the kids, and our special ed percentage in our district is 11 to 12%, and I understand the goal is 10% or less, and that's always been worked towards. So, Ms. Lanning, would you say that's accurate?
Pretty much what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
We avoid a lot of detail, but I want.
Okay, so I appreciated that, thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
We did have, when we did our programming meeting, too, we did have, Dr. Malathur did discuss a lot of the different programming that we had coming up and going on as well. When I actually talk about.
Yeah, we didn't have a programs meeting since the last board meeting, so we usually go the week after the board meeting, so we did have one, and we did talk about upcoming programming for the year, some of the stuff that's happening in the summer, so we did, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, we are meeting as a programs committee once a month.
Anything else? All right, that brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative. Mr. Heck.
Okay. So just a few things, and many of the things that I'm about to talk about are actually on today's agenda, but at the last meeting, we talked about some of the work that's going to be done inserted at Buckeye. Apparently, there's a new treatment for Torazo, which basically just permanents, so you put this down, and you don't really need to treat the floors again, which is a pretty tremendous capability, so we're going to move forward with that with Buckeye, and then we have other schools, especially here at the campus, that have Torazo as well, so don't be surprised if we're successful at Buckeye, if you don't have that type of, that sealant put down that is, you know, that is more permanent. A lot of work on the parking lots is going to be done over the summer, getting especially the campus and Lamueth. Eventually, with Lamueth, we're going to have to figure out a new traffic pattern for Lamueth. Any of you who are familiar with that, and pretty much all the parents who are here have experienced it, I know I experienced it, Lamueth has not been an ideal setup for pickup and drop-off, so we're going to move forward with that at some point in the relatively near future. I'm not sure exactly when improvements will be made, but at least we're thinking about that and trying to address that concern that many people have. When it comes to some work that is, some longer-term work, there should be some work done on the floor of the John R. Cafeteria, there's going to be work in the Lamueth and Melridge gyms, and possibly moving in the direction of actually putting a wood floor down in Lamueth, which would be really terrific, although I'd miss it because those floor tiles actually, I, you know, I played on in the Wayback Machine, so, but that would be terrific if we were, and this is all, this is all letting you know that we're planning and looking to the future, and that we want to make incremental improvements as we can. Another thing that came up was the boiler situation. As you may recall, the boiler, we had two boilers, one boiler went offline a little while ago, the remaining boiler, which we knew had to be replaced, and we had been planning for to replace this summer, went offline, I think in the March timeframe, so we had a temporary boiler interfaced in, and we got through the rest of the winter. The permanent boilers are going to go in starting July 5th, and we hope to have them done by the end of July, so we will be in shipshape condition for Lamueth going into the winter of '22, '23. And we talked about a few other things as well, including what we discussed earlier about, you know, getting the board together to tour the buildings, and what have you, but I think that is, those are the main items. Mr. Arlesic, is there anything else that you would bring up this time?
No, we're good, you covered it all. I mean, it's going to be a busy summer, I'm really excited to see the Buckeye floor. If you've been in Buckeye, it's multiple shades of dark, so that'll look great. I'm very excited to see the John R. Cafeteria floor, half of it's painted, half of it is tile, so we'll have one clean-looking floor. And then Melridge as well, that floor will be removed, and we will have a new floor installed. It's going to be a fleck, they call it a flake epoxy, and then they put an epoxy clearcoat over the top of that, so we've asked to have the floor, which is basically smooth, to put a little grit into it. It's not going to, it's not going to be so gritty that it's going to hold any debris or food or items of that nature, it'll be easy to clean. It's just an added measure we're taking to make sure that if somebody does spill something, we don't have an extreme slippery finish.
Thank you very much.
If I could just throw into the Buildings and Grounds a little bit, I had recently had a discussion with a security expert, and probably would like to introduce him to you for the Buildings and Grounds, just for security for the buildings, and moving forward with Riverside and John R., you know, we want to address security issues here. And then also, we may want to look as we move forward with the upgrading and renovation, having a district liaison. I've spoken to a person today who handled the Shaker Heights Fernway rebuilding project, and they had gutted that complete building and kept the brick exterior, and he did, he also handled other properties, and it was quite a large project. He said they came in on budget and on time, and I had to push him for this information, he's a humble man, but definitely the money that he saved the district more than paid for what he was paying. So I'll be introducing him to you there, because having him start at the beginning of the whole process might be helpful, so we might want to consider it.
I think that makes sense, and we definitely need to get all of our ideas out on the table, different strategies, and how we want to actually move forward with the various things that we will come to consensus on, so, but it's almost like a general contractor, is kind of what I.
He's a liaison, and he's checking balance on everything. He said they had 150 to 160-point items that they went through pre-construction, making sure everything was exactly in place. They vetted all the contractors, they vetted the contractors and subcontractors. He said doing all of that work enabled the whole project beyond time.
An owners representative.
An owners representative, exactly right.
Yeah, and we had that during the construction as well.
Yeah, so that would be wonderful, yeah.
True, thank you, yes, sir. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Policy Committee and Booster Organization Liaison, Mrs. Harden.
We've not had another RPTA meeting, but I do, if you have, I do kind of watch all the PTO groups post on their Facebook pages, on their social media, and it's exciting to see that they've got a lot of new boards coming up on the schools, so certainly appreciate all of our parents that take the time to be on the PTOs. It's a lot of work, so, super appreciative of our parents that take the time to be a part of those parent groups, and that's really exciting to see. As far as policy, we had a lengthy policy meeting last Friday, we had Dan McEntire, our legal counselor, there with us, too, to go over the proposed plank that Mr. Heck had brought to the board, so we made some changes to that that we hoped that everyone would be agreeable to, and that was, I know, Mr. Slick said we have some more policies coming soon, so.
Yeah, the first readings are on today, and then the entire board with the readings tomorrow.
Well, those are the, right, they said there were some more.
And it's this fall, I mean.
Right, that's it.
Great, thank you. Superintendent's report.
This week is, I'm really, really busy, and I'm excited to do is highlight some of the things that were going on past week, and even this week, I don't have it on a frame, but I wanted to forward it to everyone else that's in this room. Then we have sixth-grade camp going on, we had Buckeye Spring Concert, we had Buckeye Third Grade Folk Dance in the Riverside Gymnasium, we had the eighth-grade awards program on Tuesday, along with number-one club program, we had the Parkside Spring Concert yesterday, we also had the Parkside grade, third-grade folk dance, we also had Seniors Last Day was today, we also had Auburn Career Center had their graduation program, which might congratulate our students at Auburn Career Center. We also had seventh-grade visit today to the Riverside Campus, and we had two field days, both at Melridge and Parkside, along with softball lacrosse banquets on campus as well, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, the crazy thing about it is, is we always talk about maybe this crazy busy, and this is, we're talking the last week of school, and we have all these different activities, but it's great, it's a culmination of a lot of hard work for teachers and our students, and things that they look forward to. A lot of these things, the last couple of years, we haven't had because of COVID, and it's great to be back to normal, and have these kids experience some of the things that you experienced traditionally in our school district. One of the things I wanted to mention, too, we talked a little about RPTA already, is there's a potential Riverside is, there are a couple of parents in our district at the Riverside Campus that have interest in starting the PTA at the campus, and years ago, we had a, it was called PFC, it was a parent-faculty club, and they did a lot of things for our students, but we've noticed over the years that parents are very much involved in the elementary level, middle school level, they kind of fall off when they get to the high school, and there's not a lot of involvement in terms of, you know, PTA or PFC. We do have a couple of parents that after the spring, with a couple of issues that were going on, got together, tried to see what they could do about helping, you know, improve the climate, and they're discussing moving forward, I know there's going to be a meeting in late June with a national PTA rep, and hopefully we can get this in place close to the. we can get this in place close to the start of the school year. Very excited about it. Want to thank the parents also that are involved in trying to get this started. We also have a rec, academic recognition program that is sponsored by Lake County elected officials. And what they're doing, they're honoring students that have received straight A's for the 2021, 2022 school year. And I have listed here in the frame the students that will be honored by the Lake County elected officials. We have 67 elementary school students, 71 from the Moof, 72 from John R. Williams, and 88 at the Riverside Campus, the high school students. We're excited about that. I will report once this happens to the board in our future board meetings. Also, this past week, we have Luthersley Line Men, again, go to the schools, we haven't had this the last couple of years. Kids love this. It's where our football players go, and they read to our kids at the elementary level. A lot of these kids see, many of these students play on the football field, and now they're up close, and they have a lot of fun reading stories to the kids, and they get a kick out of it. So they were out and about this past week. We also had my crash at Riverside Campus. I don't think we've had one in the past two years. This is something that is very somber. It's a program that comes in with our first responders, and we talk about, you know, consequences and some of the dangers of drinking and driving or being impaired while driving. And it is, it's, it's hard to explain. If you're there, it does kind of hit home. We have student actors. You, when you think about this sort of thing, you don't think it might not have much of an impact, and you wonder, you know, how, you know, how much value it is. You don't realize it until you actually attend one of these things and see the value in it. It's, it's almost real. And and I know it isn't, but it, when you're sitting there, it does hit home. It makes kids think twice about what they're going to do during prom and graduation season. One of the things we always want to make sure is that we advertise also that this is going to happen to the neighborhood, because we don't want people thinking that there's a real event going on. You may have seen in the newspaper, we also had our students painting plows, our annual painting of the plow. It happened on May 13th, and you'll see many of these throughout, not only at fairs and during the summer and festivals and parades, but you'll also see them being used during the winter season. Don't think I would like to invite anyone who would like to attend. Then on May 31st at 1:00, we have military signing for those seniors that are going to enlist in the military. In the past, we've had people, our students, you know, have signings for athletic events or athletic programs. And we really want to honor our students' career choice, and it's, you know, something that we've done over the past couple of years. And we invite anyone who wants to attend. Again, the ceremony will take place in the stadium at the Wall of Honor. We also have our senior projects going on. This number of senior project attendees, the participants have increased over the course of the last few years. We have 170 seniors completing senior project these past two weeks. When I said to the board that it was seniors' last day today, it was those that weren't part of the senior project. The senior project period is scheduled for Wednesday, June 1st. For anyone that wants to come, they'll be at the Field House at 7:00. It's great to walk around and talk to kids. And what is a value of this program is that students go into these projects in areas where they think they might want to make a career out of it. And what's as valuable is that, knowing what you want to do is the value of now knowing that it's not what you want to do, especially for any of those students that want to pursue, you know, college where, you know, tuition is involved. You hate to have someone go in and get deep into their coursework, only to find out that they don't want to do something.
Superintendent Kales, that young lady painting the mural on the wall right there?
Yeah.
She was really excited because she said, in doing that, she didn't have to take her finals.
Yeah. That's very nice.
This painting too, on the wall, is a result of senior project as well.
Same, I don't get softball dug out. We also have our graduations here among us scheduled for Friday, June 30th, Riverside Stadium at 6:30. I believe people are coming to parking and getting ready around 5:30. Probably will have a time to the board.
Dan McIntyre sent us something too, she did, it had the board members' information on it, yeah.
So we're hoping that there's no rain.
It's 65 and sunny right now. She goes, it can't be as hot as last year, okay.
It was awfully hot. I do have umbrellas for the board again. I figured every time I order some umbrellas, it won't rain.
Right.
That's good, thank you.
I also want to introduce, in the bio I had on my computer, and my computer just decided to take a breather. So if you just give me a second, I will bring it up.
Clock out the blue now with the background out, right?
As the board knows, we're looking for a new Riverside Campus principal, and Bill Mayer, would you like to stand up, Bill? Is coming to us from Madison Local Schools. He has had extensive experience at all three levels, and has coached and has been an athletic director at the high school levels in multiple buildings in multiple states. He is completing his 21st year in education. He has invested, he's an invested community member, because he has three children. Two of his stepchildren are actually in our district, and both will be at the RHS Campus next school year. His philosophy is pretty simple. What I've noticed during the interview process is everything was student oriented. He always preaches the fact that it's important to be a kid connector and also being visible in the hallways, talking to kids, interacting with them, getting to know who they are, ensuring that they're safe at the school, also having high expectations and rigor, and communication is key. I don't think I have seen in our district or anywhere else, and this is my opinion, of someone who has such a social media presence than Bill Mayer, not only in his own district, but in our district. I mean, he's very positive about ours, looking at it, and he's very connected to our district. And I think he's going to be a great addition to our our administrative team. And I told him that I would ask him to say a few words, so.
Yeah, I am, I'm excited for this opportunity. My wife and I are blessed to live in this community and have our children come to the school district, and we're excited, you know, today, we're changing, turning a new leaf, going from blue streaks to beavers, you know. Like I said, Dr. Kales said, we have two of our children as beavers, and, you know, now that, now I am a beaver. And I'm excited to walk the hallways with Joey and Mia. I'm excited to ensure that, you know, educational excellence. And I've heard so many good things, I've seen so many good things, and I'm excited to get to work. Everything happens for reasons, like I always say, and this is a great challenge for myself. And I promise you, this is not just a job to me, it's, it's a, it's a calling. I have a couple of guests here that are, they surprised me tonight, today. One of my, one of my biggest supporters, and I call her the workhorse, she got her Brand Award last year, Ms. Kiesler. And then obviously, my right-hand man, Doug Baker, legend in manner out in Montana, and he surprised me today. And that just preaches, you know, the support that we have for one another, and that's, that's what we're going to do here at Riverside High School and the campus. And like I said, I'm just very, very honored and blessed to work in this district, and I'm ready to get to work.
We've received a lot of calls and emails and letters of reference from people all over Northeast Ohio that have connections with Mr. Mayor. The other thing that I heard about him is all gas, no brakes, which, I don't know if you know, that kind of concerned me a little bit. They got to pump the brakes every once in a while, so we're going to talk. We're happy to have him. And the board agenda as well, we have, we're asking that they have the board approve at least five days before his official start of August 1st to give him that way to the Last, not least, we received preliminary scores from the state. Only indicator results are available at this point, and we are told by the state that there's going to be less of an emphasis that will be placed upon just the indicators, and more of a focus will be placed on gap closing and performance index. We don't have that data yet, nor do I have data from other school districts to compare. But there's been some discussion about whether districts are notably behind because of COVID, and maybe issues related to COVID. And I have Dr. Malacker here will step us through some of this data to talk about whether or not we are behind.
So maybe a month or so ago, Mr. Hack asked, or brought up the idea that a lot of the reports that we're hearing is that students are too, you can turn, I don't have a slideshow. So, and I think Dr. Kales is done, so you guys can shift yourself back to the way, the table. Excuse me. A lot of the discussion has been whether or not students are two years behind. And and we brought up the conversation, and we started talking, and I asked for another month or so so we could get the most recent data that we had. So I have a couple of things I want to step you through this evening to show you where overall and general Riverside students are right now. It is my opinion, and those of us that have looked at this data, that Riverside students are not two years behind. So when they talk about that in general, sweeping terms in some instances or some reports, I don't think they're talking, I would be surprised if they're talking about Lake County in general. I can't make that claim for the entire county or Northeast Ohio, but I can show you what we have with regards to Riverside students. So I have a couple of things I'm going to give you and then walk you through how to look at these documents. I did not do a slideshow because it's a lot of little, teeny tiny numbers. Anybody who wants this information, I'm sure could reach out to the board or can reach out to me. It's not, it's all public record. I mean, there's nothing, I just compiled the scores that we have. So the first thing that I'm going to give you is the document that I gave you guys probably two months ago. And this is the one that shows our cohort math scores and our cohort ELA scores on state tests. And I'm going to talk you through a little bit on how to look at this document and what what it shows us. I'm not sure if I want to, I'm just going to leave it here if anybody else wants. Like I said, it's all public record, so typically I don't. So the first thing that I want you to notice, look at the site that says math scores on it, okay? And let's, so first thing I will tell you is that ELA scores for the test scores, state test scores are not out yet, okay? All we got was science, math, and social studies released already. I did not look at science and social studies because our foundational scores are math and language arts. So for the purposes of this discussion, we just have math and ELA to look at. So I will remind you ways to use this document. So if you look in the column vertically for third grade, okay? That shows how all third graders have done in our district over the course of time. So I did their graduation year and then the year they started in third grade, just so, those were kind of for my organizational purposes. So you can go all the way down and see, starting in 2005, 82.3% of our third graders passed that third grade test. If you go all the way up to the top, those are third graders that are just starting this year and took the math test for the first time. 75% of our students passed that test. And then you can see the fluctuation over the years. One thing I will say, as you look through this document and things to think about, is that each year, each class is different. So you are not comparing the same set of students when you look at this vertically. That's super important, okay? Now, what this also will show you though, is how a group of kids has done over time. So if you look horizontally, you can see how one group of students has done throughout the history of taking the state math test. So that's why the very first number, 75, there's only one number, because those kids are third grade, this is the first year they've taken the test, okay? Couple of things that I'll point out as you look at this document. When you look in that grade three column, you can see that, oh, I'm sorry, in the grayed out boxes are COVID year. So those are, those are tests that were not taken, that's why they're grayed out, because that was COVID. So that would have been spring of 2020. We did not test. So some things that you might look at when you look at this, and we certainly can visit this again, or any of you can call me to talk about. So you might look down in that third grade column, and you might look at the class of 2027, and you would say, oh, for goodness sakes, we were at 84.8% passing in third grade. And post-COVID, we're at 75%. That's true. I would say though, part of the conversation would be, we know our kids have GANPs. We know that. I mean, they missed a half a year, you know, four months worth of education. We know that, where they were completely home. Last year, we were at 72, this year we're at 75. So we're not back where we need to be, and please don't look at this and say there's no room for improvement. That's not what I want you to hear me saying. What I want you to see though, is that while we may not be exactly where we were pre-COVID, we are certainly not two years behind, and we are already starting to see increases from the previous year. So we're really in the right direction. I'm letting you digest for a minute. Anything that, so the other thing that I would say is, as you look at a grade level, okay, so as you look horizontally at the scores, there might be one that jumps out at you post-pandemic, and you go, wow, that's a big, a big dip, okay? What I would say to you is, that's when you have to look at historical trends. We have grade levels where historically we see a dip. Research shows when kids transition from one building to another, historically there will be a dip in scores. That is a fact, that is research based. So we see a dip in sixth grade, and we see a dip in eighth grade, and that has historically been Riverside's trend. It doesn't mean it's right, it doesn't mean there aren't things that we aren't going to work on. It just means don't look at one single score in isolation and and build a case or on that one particular score. You have to look at the whole trend in its entirety. Okay, so these are just state scores. I have one more piece that I want to give you that kind of supports what I'm saying. The bad side of this is the ELA, are the ELA scores, English Language Arts. The reason I want you, so it's set up exactly the same way, okay? One thing I want you to note though, on this side, the English I scores, the reason those are blacked out, that's no longer a required test. So students will no longer be taking that. Only ELA II is required for graduation. Okay, so that's why you see that they black mark them there, because those kids won't take it. So let me give you one other piece of data or compilation of data that I think is important when you're looking at where are we at with regards to, or where are our students at in regards to recovering from the pandemic. What I have, the other additional piece of information or the data that I put together for you is regarding our math scores. So our math test is the test that we give three times a year. We give it in the fall, the winter, and the spring to assess how our students are growing, okay? And this particular test is not, although it's normed, okay, and there is a definitely a set of standards and information. And there is a definitely a set of standards and information that you get from these tests. This is really to show, A, where kids start out and how far they grow each year. So a couple of things that I want you to note on this particular document. So the top sheet that you're looking at are our spring scores over time. So starting in 2013 and '14 is when we started giving the test. So you would be looking at scores from students at the end of the year. It's set up the same way, okay? So that if you look down the line, you can see how all the students did in all the grade levels in '13, '14. If you look vertically, you can see how one class has done over time, okay? Let me give you a second. The grayed out means we did not give the test. We chose to not give kindergarten the test for a couple of years. We will be going back to that next year, just as a point of conversation. I'm going to discuss my chicken scratch in the margins in a minute. Okay? The second page that you have on this document are fall scores. So this is how kids did at the beginning... The second page is how kids did at the beginning of every year. The top page is how kids did in the spring of every year. The yellow column on the second page is COVID. So that was the last score, the last fall score we had pre-pandemic. I just wanted to highlight that so you knew which year that was, okay? And then I did a little digging, a little calculating and to see if our growth and where students are achieving on the math test is commensurate with what happened pre-pandemic. So you can see all the way to the right on the spring page, so on your top page, the scores that are here, math uses what's called a RIT score. And it's a Roush unit of measurement. It's a measurement number that they have created so that you can compare students across grade levels. So it doesn't matter if you're in kindergarten or you're in eighth grade, a one sixty-nine is a one sixty-nine, okay? That doesn't matter. So there are ranges that each grade level should fall into. So I cherry picked some, did some spot checking. And the range for first grade math, students in spring should score between one sixty-three and one eighty-nine. Our students scored one seventy. So they're falling right in the middle of the expected range for first grade students on this test. Did the same thing for language arts first grade, math second grade, language arts second grade. Then I jumped down because we sometimes have some concerns in our sixth grade classes. We're falling about the middle there between two oh six and two forty for math. Our kids scored a two twenty-four. Language arts, one ninety-nine to two thirty-one, our kids were at two fourteen. Okay, so our students are scoring mid-range for the grade band. All of our students are scoring on the math test in the grade band that this test shows as a norm, okay? Then at the bottom, I also looked at our students growing each year as much as we would expect them to grow. So this was post-pandemic from this year. Our students, so I took their fall score and I compared it to their spring score. And again, I just spot checked, okay? Because this was... It takes some time to do this, obviously. But I have the information that if you want to go through every single grade level. So first grade in ELA, the students should grow between eight and twenty-four points. That's what it shows at the bottom. The expected growth is between eight and twenty-four points. Our kids grew fourteen points. Fifth grade math, they should grow between seven and twenty-one points. Our kids grew ten. Seventh grade ELA, they should grow zero to eleven. And that's because it sits, there's a standard deviation. That's how you come up with the range, okay? They grew three and a half. Third grade math, they should grow between seven and nineteen, and our students grew seventeen points. So between state tests and between the math tests that we are giving students, I feel pretty confident in saying our students are not two years behind. Are there gaps in their learning? Absolutely. Will we be dealing with those gaps perhaps for years to come? I mean, in my mind, I sometimes think, okay, in math, the skill that you may have missed as a fourth grader maybe doesn't really become applicable till sixth or seventh grade. And then we're going to have to do some hard work, you know what I mean? So are there going to be a little bit of fluctuations? Do we have to do a little bit of additional work or pay more attention to this kind of stuff? For sure. But that doesn't mean that our students are two years behind. And I feel confident in saying that through the data. We have the data to show that's the case. Now, the last thing that I will say to all of you is where you see the gaps and when you put documents together like this, which... This was already done and I told you guys that, you know what I mean? I just wanted this last piece of data, but I was already looking at this. This is what the curriculum audit was all about. Now we've identified where we see these trend dips. Now we can look at the curriculum audit and say, okay, what's not matching up? Why are we thinking we're teaching everything, but it's not translating to scores? Or vice versa? Are we choosing to not teach something that indeed is very important on the test and we're missing the mark? Have we missed some foundational skills? So it's a really good time for all of that to be coming together, okay? The last couple of things, and then you guys can ask questions if you want. I did a couple of informational things off of the math site to help you understand what a RIT score is, to help you understand how they came up with the norms. These last pieces I worked on. Oh, that worked out perfectly. Somebody should have told me to move. Wait, there's a couple of things. I'm done talking. I mean, so it's that one. Yes, give them each one of those. So the first pretty colored page tells you the norm, the growth norms, and the grade level norms that I used when I was doing those chicken scratch calculations. So you have the information if you want to do that. And then the other two tell you a little bit about the RIT scores, a little bit about how the information is normed. And then just some information from parents, or for parents that I thought would be beneficial if you're trying to understand what you're looking at. Questions?
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's good information.
So I, you know, we, everybody who's associated with Riverside and frankly, you know, throughout the nation with education, obviously had a challenge with the coronavirus and the reaction to the coronavirus. And I know that, you know, one of the things that we did, we had a split track. Where you could come to class in the first year, I guess in the second year, or you could be online. And it would seem that that strategy was helpful because even when you look at the, at last academic year, we weren't a full year behind. Obviously, we had some issues and we needed to make up. So I just want to say thank you to the, to you and the broader Riverside, you know, educational staff and everybody else that we came through some pretty treacherous times and, you know, did okay. It certainly could have, it could have really negatively impacted us and it didn't. So thanks to your hard work and obviously the hard work of many people who are not here necessarily in the room, but played a key role in that. Last year, we did have summer school to help kids catch up. And if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like we have gaps here and there. And it's not necessarily, it's not a whole class, it's not a whole this, it's gaps here and there. So it would sound as if that using summer school as a way to, you know, continue the improvement is not necessarily our best way, or do you... Do you... I guess, let me backtrack on that. What are some of the things you're thinking about to help fill in those gaps? If we can even anticipate them and fill them in?
So I have to say that our teachers have been working really, really hard to use the data to group students and really target the weak areas. So I have to give kudos to them and how this whole year on how they've been working. That's a couple of things. So a couple of things that are going through my mind. We are going to continue summer school because there are some pretty big gaps for our lowest population of, you know, our lowest students. So we are going to do that this year. One of the things that I'm thinking about...
When you say, well, are you talking younger or are you talking about children that just have not performed?
Children who have not performed, who have not achieved where we had hoped they would be now. So to still continue to close that gap for some of those students that are still really struggling. So not, because we're running it K through twelve, okay, summer school. One of the things that Cheryl and I have been talking about is how our intervention works and how we're working with students that we have identified that have those gaps and what can we do. So the curriculum audit is really going to help us with our overall classroom instruction. And teachers will work on that as teams in grade levels and subject areas. But then as we start to look at, okay, when you don't get it in what we call tier one, which is basic classroom instruction, you move to a tier two, which is an intervention situation. And what do we do in those intervention situations? I have a couple of ideas. And if you really want to start to close that gap, we'll have to look at how we're going to use personnel perhaps and have those conversations. And maybe where we want to spend some money on our tutors. Tutoring this year was not, at the elementary up through seventh grade, was not very strong because we had to pull those people so often to cover classes that we did not have a really strong intervention program. So to me, that's one place I think we really need to concentrate on. And Cheryl and I have talked about that numerous times. And we have some things in place. I think if we can get a really strong intervention program going, it will help to close those gaps. So those two things between the curriculum audit and working on our general classroom instruction and then what do we do with students who don't get it the first time around and need a little bit more support are ways that we will start, continue, I should say, continue to close that gap. Because we were making some very positive progress prior to COVID, especially on our state scores. I don't know if you guys remember, but I, we were very happy with the scores from the spring of nineteen. We were really moving in a good direction. And then, you know, so we'll get back there. You know, we just, we just have to get back there. So we have some other tools in our tool belt that will help us. But those are plans for next year and moving forward.
With regard, going back to the audit and looking at the numbers here, there was every, it sounds like there's some areas of correlation. Were there areas that did not correlate that surprised you?
I don't know if it's so much a correlation as it was in some either courses or classes that I was surprised where we aren't teaching all of the standards fully. And we've talked about that. I'm not willing to rush to judgment on that because teachers get to make, you know what I mean? Teachers make decisions on that. And until we haven't dug in as teams and as teachers, and I haven't heard them say, yes, Melissa, this is absolutely necessary in biology, and this one, they don't really test as much. That's why it's not, we don't teach it completely, you know what I mean? So I think we need, I have to wait to work with them before I can say any. Correlation-wise, I wasn't so surprised on that one. Like it confirmed some things that I thought.
And I think what the audit showed and what you had pointed out previously was that sometimes teachers were believing they were teaching it, but the scores weren't showing it. And so that's what you're talking about, the deep dive hasn't been done yet into that.
So that'll be a whole, a whole year-long process next year where it will get us through looking at the curriculum and then creating those common assessments and then really looking at where are students not meeting the mark throughout the year.
So certainly, I would say, obviously, we have work to do, but it's nice to know that under arduous situations, we were able to continue moving forward.
Yeah, very proud of our teachers and our students and how hard everybody's worked to get back on track. Thank you.
Just about to agree with you, this is the last few years also to look at data to help drive our instruction as well. Instead of just teaching in the classroom, looking at where the areas of strength are and the areas of remediation as well. We stress that also in our goals with our administrators for the next year.
Thank you. That brings us to treasurer support and committee update. Since Mrs. Grassi is not here for the finance and audit committee and personnel committee update, was there any meetings or any updates that you want to provide?
Well, some of it's been covered as Mr. Mayor would attest to. And interviewing for the principal position, and so congratulations, Mr. Mayor. And there would be other postings for other positions. And of course, this was on May eleventh, so some time has passed. And Treasurer Platko was creating the verbiage to post for the position. And have you wrapped that up?
I finished drafting the job description, getting some other input, hopefully, first thing.
So that'll be posted soon. And that's for the assistant treasurer position?
Yes.
Okay. And then we're looking at some positions at the elementary level. And what we were just talking about is looking to do in-school supervision. And this may be a little bit different, but we were talking about catching up with in-school supervision and with a tutor being able to help with that. And with the summer school being out of the two schools, mainly Parkside and Riverview for the K through eight and nine through twelve at the campus. And then one more item that hasn't been mentioned yet is the summer maintenance program for the sixteen years and older students. And that would be Mr. Arlesik, right? You'll be working with those students. Do you know how many we have thus far?
We have six.
Six? Will that be capped at six, or do you think there might...
We will take anybody who wants to come in.
Okay, so that's still open?
It is open if anybody wants to come in.
Okay.
That is what we have so far, we've signed up in a group.
All right, great, thank you. And that wraps up the personnel update.
Thank you. Mr. Platko?
Yes, I have a copy of the five-year forecast and a copy of the presentation. While we hand it out, I'm going to give a couple other quick updates before I give the five-year forecast. Remember Discovery Tours, which was the company that went out of business and affected our Chicago trip probably over years ago at this point? They were supposed to be, the trial was supposed to start on May twentieth. It was delayed to a hearing on, it was supposed to be this morning at nine AM for Joseph Chippelletti to plead guilty for like a plead guilty type of situation. But I haven't seen any news for an update on that. That actually occurred today, but that was supposed to happen this morning. So hopefully, still good news on that and what the next steps are. Hopefully, there's restitution involved with that. Help everyone get some money back from those failed trips. Secondly, Mr. Arlesik and I worked on a, the Lake County Public Utilities has a review committee for situations where we had the large war bill John, you talked about a few months ago. We worked together to submit a letter to Lake County Public Utilities to review that to see if they have a program where they can credit you back money in situations like that. And happy to report, I received a letter this week that we're receiving back a credit of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety cents. Very happy about that and alleviate some of that situation. Getting into five-year forecast, I'm going to start our presentation here. These slides have been posted on the treasurer page of the website, long form forecast and notes. And in the forecast notes also is filed with the top hundred education where you can view the five-year forecast for all school divisions. This slide here is just here to show the link to guiding to what we can help, you know, people understand how to read a five-year forecast and what the guidelines in the forecast mean. Just some general information, you know, the five-year forecast, it's based on the best information available over time to prepare. Things are always changing. It's kind of like the other forecasts where what we know is going to happen tomorrow is a lot clearer than we know is going to happen. We can read that kind of five-year forecast as well. We're required to update it every November. We're required to update it every November, in May of each fiscal year, and provides three years of actual data from years 2019 through 2021, and in five years, forecasted data, which is fiscal year '22 that we're in right now, through fiscal year '26. The forecast only tells a small part of the story, but it's important to read the notice of your net, what assumptions are built in that forecast. And the five-year forecast includes the district's general fund, and we also include the Lake County School and the Financing District Fund, which will only be for most schools this year, most districts don't have financing for it. It does not include other funds of districts such as the Deputy Tax Fund, Urban Prison Fund, federal grant funds, athletic funds, things like that, and that's a part, that's how we're required to do it. So this is kind of an executive overview. We're solving through fiscal year 2026. Deficit spending is projected to start from fiscal year 2024, so not next fiscal year, but following fiscal year after that. Deficit spending is basically where your expenditures exceed your revenues, and then the cash balance starts to decline. The current year of fiscal year '22, the current state funding formula called the Fair School Funding Plan, those details were just released in January 2022. The OD has made several corrections to those, and since that time, we've gone over that. The primary reason is that it's quite complex, and we're still looking to understand all the, all the new working zones. And then we also have to assume the next two budget and budget study in fiscal years '24 and '26. The legislature may continue to phase in the Fair School Funding Plan, or they could change it to something else, that's, you know, anybody's guess is as good as mine. You know, back when they passed this, the Fair School Funding Plan was intended to be a six-year phase-in, but the legislature couldn't tie the hands of the legislature, so there was no six-year phase-in that's official, but that was the goal, because it was intended for a six-year plan. This is, this is a very basic summary of the five-year forecast showing the beginning cash balance between fiscal year 2022. We started at $19,020,000 in our general fund. Total revenues for this year is projected at $51.2 million, total expenditures at $47.1 million, which is a surplus of $4.1 million. We're going to make cash balance around $23.3 million, we're looking to end at fiscal year '23. We need to build the cash balance a little more in that year, and after that, we start to decline, starting with fiscal year '24, when deficit spending is projected to come back. Also fiscal year '24 is a new budget at that point, so things could change as well. So that picks up our revenue here. Let's pull up my screen here so I can see a little better. The blue section of the pie chart here is our general property taxes, that's our, you know, commercial residential taxpayers. It's $30 million, approximately $30.1 million, 59%, that's 59% of our revenue. The red section is public utility tax, which is about 6% of our revenue, at $2.5 million. The section in green on the left is unrestricted grants and aids, that's basically our state funding, and also casino revenue. Casino revenue is only about $227,000, the rest of our revenue is state funding, which makes up about 14% of our revenue. And then, there's another, a different blue, teal color, property tax allocation, actually state property tax reimbursements, the homestead rollback that you get reimbursed by the state. So that makes about 7% of ours of revenue, with $4.7 million. And then the more orangish brown shade there is all other revenue, which is about $4.7 million, or 9% of our revenue, and that includes the Lake County School Financing District revenue and that. So our total revenue is about $51.2 million. This is a list of our current tax levies. The total general fund millage of $26.81 million, that's reflected in our five-year forecast, and then we have the fund improvement levy, which is separate from the five-year forecast, and our debt from our major schools, which is also separate from the forecast. The total millage of $30.14 million. If you look at a list of Lake County, Riverside, currently the third lowest district, school district tax rate in Lake County, these numbers don't include the Lake County Financing District, which is $1.94 million, but if you add that in as well, we're still in the same place because that levy affects, levy applies to Tango City, Riverside, Madison, and obviously Perry's at the bottom at the lowest because that's a very hard plan, which generates millions of dollars. I added this slide to this year's presentation, and this is the revenue from the Lake County School Financing District. Back in 2019, when the levy came up for its five-year renewal, historically, the levy is the joint levy of the four school districts, and is historically allocated based on enrollment. And so you can see that in history over the years, every year it's kept going down, 1%, 6%, just under 1%, 1%, 1.5%. So during the last renewal, it started to become less of a benefit to Riverside and more of a benefit to the other districts. And we went back to the districts and said, hey, we need to look at this, and because, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to continue the levy, and as it was at that time, the issue was by keeping the old levy, we would maintain a 10% rollback if the state pays on 2.5% more than our credit. If you were to put a new levy on the ballot and replace that, you would lose those credits and cost taxpayers more money and not really benefit that way. So we renegotiated the financing district to, at the renewal, to be based on property tax valuations, just shooting based on that instead of based on the other. So I put lines where the renewals occur, and this is looking at a fiscal year basis where property taxes are collected on a calendar year basis, so in fiscal year 2021, within half the effect of an increase, and then 2022, we did the full effect. When we originally did it, we were expecting our revenue to be around $2.4 million the first year, and then $2.7 and $2.8. And it actually came in at $2.6 million in 2021, which is a 30% increase in revenue on that levy in 2021, and then another 21% increase to $3.2 million in 2022. So I continued that projection of $3.2 million on that other revenue line throughout the forecast, but we'll continue to analyze and have to see if that holds true, if it starts to go back a different direction, we'll address it as we go. So it was very, very beneficial for us to renegotiate and really help out. On the expenditure side, our total expenditures for this year is estimated $47.1 million, and purchase services, or personnel services, which is their salaries, that makes about 54% of that, or $25.3 million. Salaries came in lower this year than originally anticipated. I think a lot of it has to do with, just like all other businesses, trying to find employees to work and having issues and challenges with vacancies, which is a cause of salaries going about $300,000 lower than we anticipated. The red box, employer retirement certificate, this is $10.6 million, or 23%. That also came in, was coming in about $500,000 lower than anticipated, and that was because the Lake County Schools Council approved a three-day holiday for this coming June, so we don't have to pay any healthcare contributions for the month of June, which saved us about $500,000 dollars. Purchase services in the green box is $6.8 million, which makes about 15% of our expenditures. If you were to look at the forecast, you notice a large drop in that category, and that's because of the implementation of the Fair School Funding Plan. Prior to this fiscal year, for students that open rolled out or attended charter schools, we would have reported that expenditure, we would fund this on the revenue side, lower that $1,000, $200 a kid, looking to take $6,020 a kid for every kid that opened rolled out, every kid that went to charter school. And that got recorded as an expense, as purpose services. Now we don't do that. All those schools are now funded directly, we're developing a study, we're only funding now based on the kids that you're actually educating, so that explains the large drop-off in purpose services. We're not reporting an expense that all was, was a deduction from OD's other schools. Materials and supplies is about $1.6 million, or 3% of our budget. Obviously, we're facing a lot of inflation these days, we have wood, diesel fuel falling, and all our other supplies as well, but overall, you know, we're, it's a small percentage of our budget. Capital outlays are very small, they're actually around 0%, and that's because of the permanent improvement fund, which is not in the forecast, that's where all the capital expenses go as well. And lastly, all other financing sources, which are all in that English color, $1.9 million, that was, a lot of that was due to the transfer to the PI based on the way we handled some of our ESSER funding, which that was a one-time transfer at that point, so that's not going to be in there. So, looking at the ending cash balance, the hard current education recommends maintaining at least 15 to 16% of the cash balance. Also, GFOA, which is the Governor of Finance Officers Association, they also recommend no less than two months of general fund operating revenues, or general fund operating expenditures that we're really looking at. And so this chart here shows three years of actual data for this year's 19, 20, 21, and our projections for '22 through '26. As you can see, we have a billion cash balance, and this is looking at year-end, so usually our lowest cash balance time happens at the end of January before we get our property tax solid, so it's always better to give a higher minimum, which I'm remembering, and you see we're in a healthy position at this time. Looking at the future, what can change? Property tax collections, you know, we didn't really see much of a fall off, you know, I think there was a fear that, you know, more delinquencies, and actually our collections are improving strong. We just had the three-year valuation update, the Lake County Auditor's office, which increases around 16%. So in three years from now, we're going to have another true reevaluation, actually individually raise all the homes. I'm projecting around 10% at that time. I've heard that's already exceeded that 10%, but at the same time, it's also on the economy, so I thought 10% was kind of a conservative estimate. It may be more, unless, but that's a different change, if that, the profit taxes. Have we already kind of discussed the state budget? Are they going to continue to phase it in? Are they adding the alternate formula, are they going to use a voucher system? You know, anything that happened in the future legislatures. On the expenditure side, staffing levels, you know, staffing shortages, will we continue to face those? I think it's probably likely that we'll still struggle to close those resolutions. Future healthcare rates, we've done good to control our rates with the Lake County Schools Council, being self-insured, with the other 11 districts and that consortium, but as you know, healthcare costs are always rising, will that affect this going forward? Will it be plan changes to try to alleviate them, additional premium holidays, which, you know, by three years, a roll of premium holiday, which is not used, not the norm, but, you know, we may have those in the future, maybe not. And then obviously, the effects of inflation, despite changes, but then those overall, new housing development, the longer changes with the numbers, how that impacts, that will lead to increased damage in the county event, so we'll give some changes in the future to address those. And that brings me to the end, so if there's any questions, everyone could have a review.
Do you know what the balance in the permanent improvement fund is at this time?
I believe it's around $7.5 million. We've been putting money aside, we did the ESSER funding, we actually transferred $3 million into PI, and we also been kind of, been on pause looking for a lot of facilities, the issue of down, you know, facilities that may have existed, so we can make sure.
When does the money come in for that? Does it come in at certain dates, times of the year, or does it come in monthly?
It's a, because it's also a levy, we tend to be getting in August, and August, yeah, usually it's August, we are, what, July, July, usually it's August, but we do get advances sometimes, we like a little bit in February, you know, get the final balance in March, and then advance in July, usually it's 7, 12 in August, with some variations depending on the other.
And generally, about, how much does that generate per year?
It generates about $2.5 million.
$2.5 million? Thank you.
And some of the things also that helped us build some of that cash balance was with the ESSER funding that received federal funding, one of the lawful uses was to purchase educational technology, so we had purchased a lot of Chromebooks out of the PI, because permanent improvement levy is not, is for any assets of a five-year life, so we buy equipment, buy deals, and then also do approvals of that. And with the ESSER funding, we moved some of these expenses off of PI, onto that federal funding, that non-funding, because it had to be used for COVID-related expenses, so we buy Chromebooks for mobile learning and things like that, so. So there was not only the transfer that we did, but also some of that's kind of existing expenses. And we had the welding lab grants that we applied for, it was cut, and when COVID hit, we built the welding lab anyways using permanent improvement funds. Then after following summer, they awarded us the grant, and we said, well, we already did it, and they said, we'll reimburse you for it. So that moved 400, they granted $400,000, moved those expenses off of PI, which is how we accumulated such a cash balance.
Thank you.
Mr. Platko, one time we were looking at trying to take advantage of lower interest rates, and I know some challenges came to doing that, now we're just sort of going up, are we, were we able to take advantage of anything?
Yeah, that ship sailed unfortunately, it was, it started off really good, and then rates have pretty skyrocketed in the last few months, and obviously we're expecting to continue, so I don't think there'll be any refinancing opportunities anytime soon.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you. So that brings us to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone?
My name is Jamie Coulter. Last month, we want to, you guys invited our son, Aiden Coulter, known as Private, to you guys last month, to the Board of Education meeting. The number of people here really would have been more of his style compared to last month, just saying. But we want to thank you guys for your recognition for him and for bringing him up, Dr. Kalas especially, it was a big honor for him, and he walked up, he walked in here terrified, walked out of here smiling. So we want to thank you guys very much for that. But on the, going beyond that, so we left the meeting right after that, at the advice of Dr. Kalas, because it wasn't an environment for Aiden to be in, but we did go home as a family and finish watching the school board meeting. So, from the view of a family, and also from a middle schooler who was part of this community, just let, the children look up to all of you guys. They look up to the board members, they look up to teachers, they look up to staff members, and they all have access to social media, they have access to watching you guys on YouTube, and to all of your Facebook pages, Twitter pages. They saw the interaction that happened between the school board members, the staff, and other members throughout the community regarding the school board levy. We need to lead by example. These kids saw the bullying behavior that was going on, and we sit here, month after month, we sit there with our kids and we talk about bullying and how it's not good. And being a parent who's had a child, a victim of bullying, it's very hard to tell your child that bullying is not acceptable when they're seeing it themselves, from the adults that they're learning from. And I think that we need to start working and teaching by example, we need to lead by example. School board members, we have all voted you in. You guys need to work together because you are our voice. Staff members, school board members have hired you, hired by us taxpayers. We need to work together, embrace these students, help them through their tough times. Yes, we all wanted a new school, yes, it would have been great, but there's some more bigger underlying issues going on in our schools that I think we need to address. We have the fights going on in the Riverside main campus, we have the bullying that's going on throughout all of the schools. Let's take care of our kids, but to do what we need to do as adults, as parents, as educators, as board members, and let's please address the issues at hand, and that is their mental wellbeing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is John Music, I live in Paintsville Township. Started first grade at Menor Avenue School, not quite to add, Menor Avenue, Drew John R., and then graduated from River- John R., and then graduated away from Riverside. I'm here today to speak and share my opinions on a couple items, one being the levy, and a couple others, which were discussed at the last previous meeting. I want to thank Mr. Hack and Mr. Fischel for voting no to put this levy on May third ballot. It was placed on the ballot and was overwhelmingly rejected by the voters. Many taxpayers in this school district are being overwhelmed or will be by their current financial expenses in this country. I could give you many reasons for this current situation, but do you have time to speak? I cannot at this time. When I was working, we used to have what we called smart objectives. I believe that this project fails to fulfill these prerequisites. And those prerequisites were specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. I believe it's not the time to put this levy on the ballot on May third or in the near future. I'm asking the board members not to do so. And lastly, after hearing some of the comments made at the previous board meeting, I want to thank Mr. Fischel for being a true servant of the students, the parents, the voters, and the taxpayers. Asking questions, looking at all options, doing your own homework and research as part of your job as a board member. All inputs and opinions are important. Over the years, I have attended many meetings and done many records requests. I have stressed transparency, oversight, and accountability. The parents and the public have the right to know what is happening in our schools. When taxpayer dollars are being spent, the public has the right to know how and why these dollars are being spent. With transparency, you can have oversight, and then accountability if required. In closing, I want to say to you, the five board members, you are the people who make the final decision. And as the old saying goes, the buck stops here, and that is with you. What happens or doesn't happen in the Riverside School District is up to you. I'm also asking all of you to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And thank you for allowing me to speak today and give my opinions. And one other thing, I attended the commissioners' meeting today. I talked to the council on eighteen people, and I talked to the treasurer, I talked to the auditor, I even talked to the Attorney General, the uninformant, at various times. And the thing about, you ask questions. And all I have to say, right now, we have two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and three people as of the two thousand twenty census, point in time number. Over sixty-three thousand are seniors. I talk to seniors every day, and they are hurting. Anybody on a fixed income are hurting. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
My name is Chris Weiss, I'm a resident of Leary Township with three sons in the district. First of all, I want to welcome Principal Mayor. We're glad to have you coming to our school district. I wish you the very best of luck. You've got a lot on your plate. And I want you to know that I, as a parent, support all of your efforts to do the best that you can for the school district. I want to also thank the school board for your foresight in voting to get a second Lake County Sheriff's Department Resource Officer to come here, particularly in light of the unspeakable tragedy that occurred two days ago. I had an opportunity a couple weeks ago to sit with our Chief Deputy Jeff Sherwood at the sheriff's office, and I wanted to share some comments that he had, that he views his relationship, that being the sheriff's department to the school district, as an extremely positive one. And, you know, that he feels that they've always been able to work well with the school district. He also mentioned that almost all of the school resource officers that have gone through here have ultimately been promoted to either detective or sergeant. And that they've done so well, and he opined that, you know, having his deputies work as resource officers has given those deputies a real perspective into dealing with young people and issues with the school. So on that note, I would ask that going forward, and again, in light of the tragedy of a couple days ago, any efforts that the school board chooses to take, please, please, please get the input from the various sheriff's department officials. Deputy, Chief Deputy Sherwood had a couple guys that are no longer sheriff's deputies that work as consultants now. You know, we saw, I at least saw some of the early reports on the tragedy in Texas, that law enforcement officers had to break windows and pull children out of rooms. And I believe they also used that means of entry to get to the shooter and defeat him. You know, so again, I know that two of our schools don't have some of the upgrades that the brand-new ones have, and I think that the input of law enforcement is key to succeeding that. Lastly, I wanted to ask that the school board pass the OSBA transparency platform as written. It's bewildering to me why some members of the board would, they seemed obviously resistant to passing that and adopting it. I think that much of it is already in the school policies, and it should be adopted on its face. And then lastly, I would ask that with regard to discipline, that we start enforcing not only the dress code here, but the student code of conduct. And Principal Mayor, that's something that I would ask that you look at very seriously. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Well, we all know that this past week, we had a very sad and tragic incident happen at one of the schools in our country. So I would like to take some of my, my three in a time and ask that we take a moment of silence for the kids, the students, the parents, the first responders, for the law enforcement that had to deal with such an incident here in our country, and also for all of us in our country that are suffering from a loss like this. And I'm asking for safety for our kids, our community, our teachers as well. So if we could just take a moment of silence, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public participation? All right. That brings us to our consent agendas. Finance and audit consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the items listed on the finance audit consent agendas recommended by the treasurer, items A through W.
Second.
Second. Mr. Hack, any discussion? Mr. Placko, can you take the roll?
Staff official?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Lori Knessy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And there's also some donations to be noted. Six hundred seventy-eight dollars, sixteen cents from the Riverside High School Gridiron Club for coaches for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year playoffs. And six welding helmets to Mr. Blank's welding class from Mr. Blank's former students, Andrea Orlando Yost and Joseph Palinkas.
That brings us to the personnel consent agenda.
Motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. That's A through K. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Placko, can you take the roll?
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Lori Knessy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Staff official?
Aye.
Motion carried. That's, next is the consent agenda for the curriculum and programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through E. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Lori Knessy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Staff official?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda for buildings and grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, items A through I, as recommended by the superintendent. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fischel. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Staff official?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Lori Knessy?
Aye.
Motion carried. So what's the other?
Sure. Well, we have first reading, probably, okay. So, okay, that's mine as well.
So is there, so we just have, we have a second reading, and this will be on for approval?
This is the first reading, second reading will be on June.
Exactly what I meant to say. So we will vote on this in June. And then there's also legislative platform. Resolution answering the Ohio School Board Association's call to refine, hone, and amend the OSBA legislative platform. Is there a second?
A second.
And Mrs. Harden? Any discussion?
Just want to say thank you. I know you guys probably had a long policy meeting, working through that, but thank you for doing that.
No, we did. And, you know, there's a lot of inputs, Mrs. Harden had input, Dr. Kalas and others in the room had input as well. So I think we were able to address the language issues that we initially had. And I think we've come up with something that, that will hopefully be useful to OSBA.
I appreciate how we all work together. For sure.
Yeah, terrific. With that, we call the roll, please.
Staff official?
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Lori Knessy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to a board of education update.
Just want to say congratulations to our class of twenty twenty-two. Can't wait to go up, be out there and celebrate with them.
Exciting.
Exciting stuff?
Very exciting.
So just a little reflection, so my daughter graduated from Ohio State just Sunday before last. And, you know, twenty eighteen, when she graduated, was, you know, four years ago. It's just, it's fascinating how fast time flies. But she's now headed out to a summer job and eventually onto the Peace Corps. And, but it's just, you know, every, every year, we have something going on. And we've had so many trials and tribulations, but I think that through it all, we've banded together, and we've done some good things. And, and, glad, perseverance, and glad to be part of the team.
I am thankful that Mr. Kalas, Dr. Kalas did not share our high school graduation pictures again this year.
Oh, my gosh, I forgot about that.
That would be going on. I forgot, but I, I still have to get Mr. Fischel's. So Mrs. Fischel might be able, she, she's.
She's out in the hall.
You should get her.
Get his picture?
We need a high school picture.
Yeah, last year.
We need a, we need a high school picture of Mr. Fischel.
They don't exist anymore.
Any other board of education updates? All right. That brings us to our next meeting announcement. There's a Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee meeting, June seventh at eight AM. There's a Curriculum and Programming Committee meeting, June fourteenth at seven thirty AM. Finance and Audit and Personnel Committee, June twenty-third at eight AM. And then our normal business meeting on June thirtieth at seven PM. I've motioned to adjourn at nine oh nine PM. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Jennifer Hurd?
Aye.
Lori Knessy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Staff official?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.